Hey, good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four at nine AM. We will start our work session. Is there any public input that doesn't have to do with specific items on the list? Okay. We'll move on to Casey Daly approved water rights.
Casey Daly from the Fairgrounds. In your packet, you will have an application that I've been working with, uh, Westroden. From O A D to purchase additional twenty one point six acres of water rights that had come available. Um, the little project out on the highway. This will get the fairgrounds complete. Will be able to water the complete fairgrounds.
Yeah.
With everything. Uh, it's twenty one point six acre P. Uh, the cost of it is ten thousand eight hundred and we did have it approved by our budget committee. From the two billion dollars. So it is within our piece of it. Obviously, water rights are an asset. Never go wrong upon the water rights.
Any discussion?
No, us. We're going to the consent agenda next week.
Sure.
Is that moving the consent agenda? Yeah, let's see to make a good job, Casey. Okay, thank you.
Haley?
Hi, where do I go?
No, you can come sit up over here.
Is right here, Mark?
Sure.
Hey, good morning. Haley Crowe, Creighton Fairgrounds. Um, today I'm asking for your guys' consideration in approving fifteen hundred dollar grant from the Creighton County Cultural Coalition. That supports our bacon buddies program at fair. Uh, last year we had a swine show. This year we're going to do swine and rabbit. And this, uh, these shows are especially for community members who have physical and or mental disabilities. Let's them, you know, try their hand at showing an animal at fair. Uh, last year, the program was fully supported by the cultural coalition. This year we have some funds coming from the four H Association. So they're going to be covering, covering our budget fees and our supplies for orientation day. Um, so with, uh, their contribution in this grant, we'll be right on budget and it's an excellent thing to have it done. So thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
And in October, we received a plaque. Linda and I were an Oregon Fair Association. And we received an award from the state for bacon buddies.
Yes.
So, good job, Haley.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, guys. Back door. Cheryl on the.
I don't think her video works, which is the top left is great.
Darn, you don't get to see me. Can you hear me? I was all, I was all fresh and ready too. Oh, well. This cold is a rough one. So apparently it's, it's hit hard. So in your packet, um, I have given you the, um, the, the House bill for the, uh, rank choice voting. As well as the, um, measure that's going to be on the ballot in November. And this is something that it is definitely going to be on the ballot. Um, it was something that they passed last legislative session. So you can see too on that House bill, um, who all, you know, brought that forward and where that came from. But, uh, Benton County, um, the city of Corvallis and Benton County itself have done this, um, already. They've been doing it a couple of elections now and, um, Multnomah County, I believe, the May primary will be their first. They have passed an ordinance, um, doing rank choice voting. So this will go before the voters. This will make all statewide and federal candidates. Rank choice. Uh, implementation is not until January of twenty twenty eight, which the Clerks Association worked really, really hard. We tried to work really, really hard, I guess, with the group on this. We would have liked to have just flat opposed it, but when you oppose something, you don't, don't get a seat at the table anymore and they don't want to hear what you've got to say. So we supported it with amendments and one of the big amendments and Secretary of State backed us on it was that implementation date. Because this is a big change to our system. Every vote tally system in Oregon has to have the ability to do rank choice voting. And the majority of us have a system that with an upgrade that can be done. Of course, there's fees involved, but there's a few of the smaller counties that have older systems that they have to buy all new systems. So that's one big one. Um, the talk about funding for this, um, is going to come up in the next couple of years. Um, I don't think they have a, an act, exact number or a we've got some approximate numbers, but of course those change every year as, as expenses go up. So, um, but just something that we kind of all need to be prepared for. I'm going to start, um, looking at, um, different ways to explain this to folks as they start hearing about it. So they understand what they're voting for. Um, the way the measure is written, of course, it sounds warm and fuzzy. Um, and it, it can be, I, the concept is really not that hard. Um, it's just the process to, um, audit. You know, we, we audit everything. So we know exactly, I mean, you can go to our paper ballots and and, and we, you know, do samplings of it and you know exactly, um, how accurate our machine tally is and it's always accurate. This makes it a little bit harder. This also creates those, um, choices that are, that have to be ranked and they only have to be ranked if there is a winner that didn't get fifty percent of the votes or more. Which it does happen, probably more often than we realize. So, um, then all of the votes for the, the last place person then go to the second, their second choice. And then those get distributed, but those all have to go to one place to be done. I can only rank them for my county. But I can't rank if it's a state race. I can't do the ranking because I have to have everybody else's results to do that. So that in Oregon, it's going to create, probably the Secretary of State's going to have to be involved in vote tallying, um, and be the official, uh, person that will do the ranking if the votes have to go to the ranking process. I hope that.
That was pretty shady to me.
Hope that makes sense, but yeah, it, it does. It, it kind of, you know, it created, I mean, it's, it, in Oregon, it's a lot harder to implement because of the way we do vote by mail and the way things are done. So, and then it's how do you get that data to that one party that's going to rank him for this, for the state or for the federal, but the, because they're statewide. Do you send them a, a, you know, a, a data file? I mean, our systems all create, um, a data file. But how do you get that to them securely? How do you know that what's in that file is what they're ranking? I mean, there's just a lot of, there's just a lot of things. So, um, I think the more we can educate, um, our citizens about this process and what, what it really is like. I mean, the, you know, the good, bad and the other. I mean, you, they really need to hear all of it, not just the, oh, this sounds like a great idea. Let's go for it. So anyway, so we'll, I'll be preparing some, some stuff on that probably through the summer. So before the ballots go out and might not even hurt, um, to have some sort of something in the state voter's pamphlet as far as arguments. I think there is a group of clerks that's putting together a pack. Um, and we'll see how that goes. I was just contacted on that this week. So we'll see how that goes.
Okay. So I've got a question. Are you saying that it hasn't passed yet? I thought you just said it had passed.
So it passed through the House. So that House bill passed last year, but that House bill says it goes to the voters statewide to decide.
Okay, well, that's a little better.
In that packet with that House bill is the, um, the ballot title and the questions that will, that's what will be on the ballot in November. And if you read through that, it, it sounds, sounds good. Um, we would have liked to have edited it, but we didn't have the right to do that. It just, it, yeah, it, it, they make it sound real warm and fuzzy and it's not as, you know, it's, it's not like it's misleading, but it's, it's definitely, um, worded in favor of, I think in favor of that, um, ballot measure.
Is there, are we the only state to do this? Is there any other state that's done this?
So, um, Maine and Alaska have been doing it. And there are thirteen other states that have, um, municipalities or counties that do it. Um, I was in Texas this last July, um, for the state Iger, for the, the National Igo Conference. And I talked with a gal in New Mexico that's done it. And she actually had really good things to say about it from a clerk's standpoint, the way they, you know, the way they did it, the way they explained it, and she was happy to share information with me. Um, there are five states that have actually prohibited it. So, um, but there's quite a few states that have it on the ballot this year, like we do. We're one of, one of many. Um, and everything I'm reading online, it, it kind of looks like it's, um, it's being pushed as the new way to reform our election process. So it's probably something that will catch on, you know, nationwide before long. So, and apparently some areas like San Francisco, they've been doing it since the early two thousands. So some smaller, well, they're not small, but you know, municipalities, whether it be city or county areas have been doing it for a long time. So.
You should have led with that. Yeah.
Yeah.
It just seems, you know, I know you told me about it, Cheryl, and I know I read your thing. It's just so confusing. I just, yeah, I'm just amazed we can't just stay in our own system, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I actually saw it done. Um, we had a, there was a vendor that demonstrated it when I was in Texas and we, we voted, we ranked candy bars, the top five. And so they showed us a visual of how it worked and it, it made complete sense. It was real simple. But that's kind of the overall gist of it. But then when you start looking at how do you audit it? How do you implement it? How do you, how do you make that work with Oregon's vote by mail? That's where it gets really difficult. And, and how do you explain that to a voter without having them go watch this video? So I have a feeling it's going to create probably way more confusion than, than they think. People get confused now when you have to pick, you know, the top candidate out of three or five or whatever. I mean, we get people that vote for two or it, they, you know. So, yeah, it's, it's going to be fun just to add to all the wonderful fun things that I have to deal with, but.
Good.
So more to come on this.
Yeah. Yeah. Let me, let's wrap this up and open to the public. Uh, do you have anything else, Cheryl?
No, that's it.
Um, is anybody from the public have anything to weigh in on?
I have one. Cheryl, this is Tim DeVoot.
Yes.
Um, my understanding last fall was there could actually be several measures on the ballot uh, for different kinds of rank choice voting. Have they settled on a single methodology or are we still looking at multiple methodology?
So, um, this particular measure uh, doesn't really get into the the nuts and bolts of are we ranking five? Are we ranking six? Are we ranking three? It's just kind of an overall thing. There are a bunch of other House bills um, out there, um, that have talked about it. And, and I know there's some right now legislative committees looking at those. So as far as I know, this is the only one that the voters will actually approve in November or disapprove or they'll get to vote on. But um, there could be others and I, I do anticipate this one possibly either having amendments or I, the way it's worded, they've just allowed the, the state to, um, make and the election officials to make the determination on how this is carried out. So, um, Benton County ranks three, Multnomah County ranks five. You know, this could end up being determined that we rank six. Uh, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
You rank one?
The, the nuts and bolts of it is not in the bill and it's not in the measure. It's just the concept.
Anyone else?
Yes. Garth Finley, just for giggles and grins, could I ask which states rejected that?
Sure. I have that. Uh, let me get.
You've got Mike Urban with his hand up.
It's, uh, Tennessee, um, Montana, South Dakota, Florida and Idaho.
Uh, Mike?
Yes, just two comments. Uh, number one, somebody asked, I think Suzie, you ask who, what states are doing this and Alaska is one of them. And they're, they are currently trying to get rid of it because it doesn't work well for them. The other thing is Cheryl has mentioned it twice in her presentation. And when you look at the total, uh, how everything works, she mentions the word audit. You, you have a much more difficult time and to some degree cannot audit the vote. So you, when you look at who has rejected it, who has used it and who's trying to get rid of it, it's not a good plan. Thank you.
And, and Mike is, Mike is correct when he says it will be difficult to audit. Now I will guarantee you that the clerks will not go forward with something like this if we can't accurately audit it. Um, Oregon clerks are really big on that. Um, everything has got to be auditable or, I mean, it.
Are you, so are you saying that they, there's a possibility that the court could reject it if they decided it was un-honorable?
No, but we will come up with a way to audit it. It just might be very, very difficult, but there will be a way to audit it. That will be part of the process. It's just going to be lengthy and it will be difficult, but it, it will be done. But there will be a possibility with the, the expense that it could end up being, uh, something we are set up to, um, go through the whole unfunded mandate process, um, because it is going to be a big expense to some of the county. So that whole piece has to be worked out too. So and I think we all know, we've all voted on measures and measures have passed that, um, never actually get implemented because of one thing or another. So this could be one of them, but it will, I'm sure all of the details will get worked out in some way, um, if it does pass. So.
Great. Anything else?
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Will, Randy? Good morning.
Um.
I'm sorry.
It's actually Christine.
Go ahead and see the table. Just trying to lure you out of the corner.
They're on deck.
The batter's box on, yeah.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, wanted to give you an update on our enterprise resource, um, program. The ERP that we are putting together with Town Cloud. We've made some really significant strides in implementing this project. We have a full new updated chart of accounts that will greatly increase the ability of us to use our financials as a tool rather than just a reporting, uh, mechanism. Part of what we have run into now that we've gotten to this place where we do have a chart of accounts and then can start putting data into the ERP. Uh, as long as, or also with looking at the accounts payable module that requires us to import our vendors and import all of the information from our current ERP, Navaline into our new one is that our current ERP houses data in a lot of different places and they're not always the same. So we have instances where there's one list of vendors in one part of the Navaline. And there's another list of vendors in another part of Navaline. And they don't necessarily have the same information for each vendor. So we've run into a situation where there's a lot of data validation that's going to need to happen that we were not expecting just because of the way the backend database information is in Navaline. It's not going to be a, an easy, just suck it out of Navaline and put it in Town Cloud. Because of some of the erroneous stuff that's, that's in there. So while we're really excited with the progress, the data validation, we really want to make sure we don't put garbage from Navaline into Town Cloud and run into a bunch of issues that way. Unfortunately, because of staffing, we don't really have the capability to do that data validation in-house. Um, and Town Cloud has actually been doing some of that data validation as part of their work to make sure we're building Town Cloud to meet our needs. Um, at this point, it's kind of gotten outside of the scope of what we had originally approved Town Cloud to work on. So with our IT staffing, uh, still working on being filled in the finance staffing, what we need is some knowledgeable assistance to really be able to validate that data coming from Navaline and going into Town Cloud. And because Town Cloud has already been working with that data and is familiar with Navaline on a backend uh, side of things because they were some of the original people that built Navaline. We are requesting that we have Town Cloud do some additional data validation for us. And what that looks like is pulling all of our vendors and helping us go through and remove duplicates. Um, verify information is correct. We have situations where businesses are listed as individuals. Individuals aren't marked as needing a ten ninety-nine, but they've been getting a ten ninety-nine. So the data in Navaline, well, it works great in Navaline for how Navaline is set up. Pulling it out and putting it into a new system is just going to create issues if we keep the problems that are in there right now. Um, and the same is with projects. When we polled our project reports, there's a bunch of erroneous dates that we can't even see in Navaline and we have no idea where they're coming from, that all need to be either removed or reviewed. The most notable one is project end dates, which really has an effect on reporting because it only allows you to use that project code for certain periods. And we ran into an issue where project codes we had created in twenty twenty-four had an end date of two thousand seven. And so we can't figure out where those end dates came from. We need to clean all of that up before we can use it in a new system. Um, so that being said, part of this update is a request to, uh, have Town Cloud do some additional data conversion and help us with the validation of that, that data. Part of it'll be creating a legacy, uh, crosswalk within Town Cloud, which is really going to save us significant time. It will allow us to put our old Navaline account number into Town Cloud and Town Cloud will automatically know which new account it goes into. For the reason that is so necessary is we went from a chart of accounts of about four thousand lines down to about twenty eight hundred lines. And putting all of that in a spreadsheet is massive and can just lead to mistakes. And creating a software that will do it automatically for us correctly every time will save us a tremendous amount of validation work and headache in the future. And it will also allow us to import journal entries from Navaline for payroll, which we're still going to have to use until we have a payroll solution. And it will automatically update those journal entries to the current new chart of accounts in Town Cloud. So we won't have to do that manually. Uh, for example, those entries have about six hundred lines. So we would have to code those individually by hand every single payroll if we didn't have this kind of crosswalk built into Town Cloud. So additionally, we talked about the projects, so that'll pull that project data. It will actually also give us an additional layer of capability for projects. So we can have a parent project and children projects. And where that really comes into being really helpful is in the health department where they have a grant that has multiple years. So we can have one grant or one program element. And it can have the funding for fiscal year twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-three and fiscal year twenty-four separated underneath of it for reporting purposes, but also that roll up at the top. So you can see what that grant is doing as a whole. Um, let's see. And then the other one is, is the vendors. We have about seven thousand vendors. And, um, validating those, there's quite a few that in the past we had issues where uh, vendors weren't able to make sure they got our invoices coded correctly. So for example, By Mart, we have six different By Mart vendors in there because Sheriff's Office had a By Mart account. Uh, the health department had a By Mart account, finance had a By Mart account, and we had to pay all of them separately on separate checks. And to do that in Navaline, you had to have separate vendors. Well, we're able to do that in Town Cloud by using one vendor, but clicking a box that says send separate checks. So we don't have to have all those duplicate vendors and we can get that cleaned up. So that being said, I'm really excited with the progress we're making. And our plan for the ERP is to slowly roll it out, uh, one department at a time initially. And Kim Herbert at Extension has volunteered to be kind of our first guinea pig, um, to test our data in Navaline and make sure everything looks good. And the plan for that is as soon as she gets back, so around March first, to put all that data in and confirm that it's all working correctly. And then we had a couple of other early adopters that volunteered. Cheryl is one of them for Clark's office. So it'll be good to see how that department functions. As well as, uh, Sean with the museum also volunteered to be one of the early adopters. So it will be really exciting to get that data in here in the next few weeks and confirm that everything is working correctly and as expected. So are there any questions that I can answer?
No, really extensive, good explanation.
Thanks. I know it was long. I didn't plan on talking that much, but sorry.
It was super helpful. So, yeah, no. No, it was all good talk. Thank you.
And you did very well, Christina. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm excited that we are where we are with it. I know it's taken a little longer than we'd planned on. Uh, just due to staffing resources, but I'm really thankful for Steven's help and Town Cloud and Andy to get it where we are. And Crystal as well. Um, Crystal Hughes has been helping in the background with the chart of account stuff. So.
Good.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will, ready?
Yeah, let's roll start.
Good morning again. Uh, before I turn it over to Randy to, to discuss the building program, I just want to know quickly. I'm going to be looking to make some changes to the, the format of this report as they incorporate some key performance indicators. Uh, so as we're going through today, think about whether there's any information in here you don't want, or if there's anything you would like us to add to it because we're, we're looking to make some changes. So just heads up on that. Go ahead, Randy.
Morning again. Um, so on the building side, as you guys can look at this report, you know, for the month of January, we're forty less permits issued for this month. Um, you know, two hundred down for the fiscal year. I mean, it's slow. We've had some snow. This type of slowdown is expected. We're about two hundred and some inspections less than we average month to month. Um, we're still got two hundred and seven houses that are currently under construction, seven hundred and sixty-six other type of residential accessory barns, shops. Um, and two hundred and eighty-one commercial projects or permits open and active right now. So the commercial is still staying pretty strong, which, you know, it's, that's kind of what I've been saying for the last four or five years. And it's, again, not just the Madison, it's the, the rest of the construction we have. So the other thing we're looking at and doing with the staff and team is in addition to their inspections and planning duties is we're mandated to go, um, for digital plan review, January one, twenty twenty-five. So we're beginning training in this little bit of a downtime with the guys to get us, everybody comfortable on blue beam and digital plan review. Um, the other thing we have is we have all new residential codes, home and electrical mechanical. So we are, we've got the new code books. They're supposed to be effective October one. Due to paper shortages still from COVID and whatever doing for printing, we just now got the code books last week. So we're taking the state training classes on all the code changes so that we can educate our staff so that we can get the new code provisions out and following electrical, residential and structural. So there are a few changes in there that, um, you know, energy efficiency, some solar stuff, um, that, you know, are new that, you know, we, we had anticipated coming, but it's just going to be a change to the building industry and kind of how some of these units are installed. So, um, and then with that too, you know, we've got, uh, on the commercial, you know, we're looking for, we've got Wayne Jackson back at on call. We got Cal Walter on call for our commercial structural. So we're taking this time, we've got most of the, uh, older senior staff. You know, Rick Aaron is retired as well. Mike Jensen, which was a new hire about a year ago, he took a job in Idaho, uh, to be closer to his family. So in addition to the training and the new codes, we are, we've got two guys in, uh, commercial class to try and prepare for twenty twenty-five. In the event we get some larger commercial construction, we are short on certifications for commercial structural. Um, we've got Rich Evans, another senior staff heavily certified. He's going to be retiring, going to on call in August. So we're preparing to backfill his positions as well. So a lot of staff changes, a lot of certifications we have to refill and train on. But, um, you know, we stay a little slow, we'll be able to accomplish that without, hopefully adding additional staff later. That's it. Cool. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Randy.
On the, uh, the planning and. On the uh, the planning and onsite side of things, uh, this slowdown is proving to be pretty persistent. So our numbers for planning, only nineteen permits in January, uh, that's down uh, twenty-five last year. And you're already kind of in the slowdown, so. Things remain slow on the planning side, only thing, uh, only application of, of no is we received an application. In January for a Dollar General of Juniper Canyon. So that is uh, a different, different type of use than we've seen up there, so it'll be um. Interesting to see how that, how that hits out. Um. On the onsite side of things, things are, like I said, slow. Uh, only, only twelve permits in January um, of this year versus thirteen last year. So things remain slow. Some of that could be weather in this January and it's hard to do. Groundwork that you need to do for onsite when it's snowing, icy out, but at the same time, those numbers are, are pretty low. Uh, I did want to note in regard to code compliance, I'm gonna follow up um, with county court in a couple of weeks. Probably the next work session to discuss a number of complaints that we have received. Um, over the last couple of weeks in, up in Juniper Acres, we have one copy of that there who initially submitted. There goes eight complaints and then we received another very complaints um, earlier this week. Very, yeah. Uh, so we have. Uh, you know, historically, we have not seen a lot of code compliance complaints filed uh, in Juniper Acres for a number of reasons, I believe, but. Uh, anyway, hopefully a heads up on that. Uh, you and I are gonna um. Put our eyes together, but we will be followed up with the cast, what it do, you all about that, and let's go home out there. Um, also, at that time, I should have a report back from COIC. Um, we contracted with them to do some outreach for us. And before we take any further steps with COIC, C O I C, they need to provide us a, a report on what, what they have learned through their outreach efforts. Um, so hopefully I'll have that within the next couple of weeks and kind of include that in that presentation again. I think before, before those complaints started rolling in for Juniper Acres, uh, things are pretty slow on the compliance side of things, so. Things are obviously picking up.
The Dollar General store will go before the planning commission?
Correct.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
We got a, we got a public question.
I was just curious, Garth, with Carpenter, do you, what kind of complaints are, if I can ask those, do they generalize as one or two of the same? Or are they all different?
I had, I, I not got through them specifically. I'm assuming there's a lot of solid waste complaints and uh, new construction. Uh, anything else?
Okay, Andy?
Uh, yeah, we received from the B L M, a seeking public input related to. A project going on at Horse Ridge Recreation Management Area. It's an area about thirty miles southwest of Prangville. And the. Letters in the packet, it goes into some detail about all the different things that's under consideration. Uh, there is public comment. It was due by March thirteenth. And just, you know, if uh, you as a body want to. Have any public comment, this was an opportunity to go ahead and have that conversation.
Sure. Uh, so I talked to a rancher that used to have a ranch out there. He was not super excited. He, he's actually sold his ranch because there's so many trails and so many things going on. And so uh, I think it would be helpful to talk to people that own land out there and are actually managing the land. And see what their thoughts are. So I'm, I'm kind of in the process of trying to find somebody that lives out there, to find out who bought the ranch and. I mean, that's what I, those are the people I'd like to hear.
And then Tim, I pass that letter to you. Did you have any, any comments on it?
Uh, well. Yeah, so my understanding first, this is in the Schuets County, um. Horse Ridge, it's an area where there's been a lot of. Trail systems that have not been authorized by B L M, my recollection of their story. Um. And this is an attempt one to sort of bring some management to that area that's been unmanaged for a while. I expect there's going to be lots of comments, uh, because it does look down on one of the Badlands Wilderness. Area, uh, and so those folks uh, seeking wilderness experiences. Looking across the highway and seeing hooping, hooping and hollering and bike riding may not fully enjoy their wilderness experience. Um. But from the stand-in or eliminating some trail systems, there's a natural resource area which is sort of taboo. Uh, for any sort of development and I see there's some trail systems in that natural area. Uh, they're eliminating those trails. Uh. Enforcement, of course, is gonna be a big issue for B L M uh, as they move forward with this kind of a project. Uh, proximity, you know, we heard when we were, you guys were dealing with. Uh, the trail system proposal of Mill Creek, uh, the demand for trails for bike riders. Central Oregon is becoming an area uh, where uh, mountain bikers are coming to visit. Uh, and want to have a trail experience while they're visiting. In many cases, they're coming because of the trail systems that are in the Deschutes National Forest and. And this just is gonna give them a desert, desert experience on top of the forest experience that they get on the Deschutes, so. Um. You know, like Seth said, it's an area that's probably has some active grazing allotments. Uh, but they're probably not actively being used because of already sort of conflict issues between cows and. People who don't know how to check gates and other kinds of things, so I don't see those issues raised in the. The bullet points by B L M, but um. So the problem with the, like, this kind of a notice and the county's natural resource committee commenting. Um, if they would at all, because again, it's outside the county boundary. Um, is these are usually thirty-day notice kinds of things. And the timing of when the notices come out, a chance for really sort of in-depth public comment. Uh, and meaningful comment to get back in time like this is March thirteenth. Well, so the natural resource advisory committee for the county is not even gonna meet by then. So um, the processes for citizen participation and whether it's advisory committee or just general. Is very difficult and we've talked to the public land agencies about that. Um, they will talk a lot about how their processes are kind of spelled out already in rulemaking. So for them to say, well, we'll have forty-five days or sixty days instead of normal thirty days, it's kind of, you know. An unwillingness to change. Uh, one has to remember this is a scoping process, so there'll be lot, another opportunity down the road. To participate in another public input process when B L M issues a draft decision notes. That could be a year from now or longer. I think they have. They're supposed to finish it at their NIPA processes within eighteen months. So this is the initiation of a NIPA process, so they have up to eighteen months that I think to finish that, so anyway. Um. I'm at the moment. You won't get an organized thought process out of the advisory committee on this topic, uh, because of the timeframe. Be happy to, you know, if you, any of the individuals have some thoughts, if you want to pass those by me or, you know, just. For a review, I'd be happy to do that, but. That's kind of, I think where I'm at at the moment. Any advice to you guys?
Listen. All right, anything before we go into, uh, are you ever? Reports for our mission?
Uh, administrative report, the only thing I wanted to bring up, uh, mentioning yesterday, the solid waste management plan, Kevin McCarthy would be the consultant. Here on the thirteenth for the work session to give you an update on that.
Okay, on to executive session. Oh, wait, Suzie?
Wait, one way, what, what?
Did you have something on, uh, you were, you were asking me about the um, your letter to the woman?
Oh, yes, before we, uh, so there was a lady and her name is. Let me make sure that I get it right. Her name is Marilyn. Oh, where are we? Marilyn Malloy and she got the Cecil Sly Award uh, on Saturday from Chamber. And she's done a lot of work with cancer. Her daughter had cancer, was projected to only live six months and she's still alive. And she's done tremendous amounts of volunteering in the community. There's really not anything that I think that she hasn't been involved in. So I thought it would be nice. I was gonna write a personal letter and just say, we just wanna, you know, thank you so much and whatever. And I was hoping that I could just get Seth and Brian to also sign it, that we just are just acknowledging that she's volunteered so much and done so much good. And acknowledging her uh, presentation of the award, just kind of a warm, fuzzy little thing. So do I need to make, well, do I, can I make a motion right now?
I'd say so.
I would like to make a motion to uh, write a letter to Marilyn Malloy on uh. On the awarding of her Cecil Sly Award and her accomplishments in our county.
And sign it out of court.
And sign it up, yeah, we'd have to sign it out of court, yeah. I haven't written a letter. I just have a station right now. A blank piece of paper, but I'll, I'll figure something out. Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Good idea.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we will now go into ORF one nine two six six zero two H consulting with county conceiving. Considering the legal rights and being a little public body with. Because the current litigation.